I'd like to call this Village Board meeting of May 4th, 2017 to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Trustee Sullivan.
Here.
Trustee Light.
Here.
President Jackson.
Here.
Trustee Miratato.
Yeah.
Trustee Pojak.
Here.
Trustee Schroeder.
Here.
Would you all please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In case this looks a little strange to everybody, today is Students in Government Day and Glenside Middle School Student Council is here to take our places, but before we let them take over with community announcements, Pastor Cass is here as this is National Day of Prayer. So Pastor, if you would come up, we'd appreciate it.
We bow our heads in prayer. Eternal Lord, ruler of all, graciously regard those whom you have set in positions of authority among us, that guided by your Spirit they may be high in purpose, wise in counsel, firm in good resolution, and unwavering in duty, that under them we may be governed quietly and peaceably. Lord, you have given us this good land as a blessing. Help us to remember your generosity and constantly do your will. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil course of action. Grant that we who came from many nations with many different languages may become a united people. We lift up Mayor Jackson along with President Trump and Governor Rauner. Give these individuals and others to whom we have entrusted the authority of government the spirit of wisdom, that there may be justice and peace in our land. We pray that as the newly elected leaders of Glendale Heights begin their new term, you would be with them and help them to set the right priorities for our community. Help them to know what is right. Give them courage to do what is right. And give them strength to continue in what is right. As leaders of Glendale Heights meet this evening, bless them in the decisions they make through Jesus Christ our Lord and Savior, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. And now before we begin, would you like to say something, Mrs. Schroeder? Or would you rather wait till we're done? Okay. You guys enjoy yourselves. And we'll be back maybe.
And for our first trustee, we have trustee William Schmidt.
The next coffee with the mayor and village board is scheduled for this Saturday, May 6th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at the Center for Senior Citizens. If you have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the mayor or village board, please call the mayor's office anytime at (630) 909-5303. The Village of Glendale Heights is now hiring a variety of positions at the Glendale Lakes Golf Club, GH2O Aquatic Center, and the Glendale Heights Parks Recreation and Facilities Department. Positions range from waitstaff and banquet servers at the Glendale Lakes Golf Club to lifeguards at the GH2O. Aquatic centers and seasonal youth program counselors at the Sports Hub. Gain valuable experience and make friends for a lifetime working for the Village of Glendale Heights. For more information, please visit www.glandalehighs.org or contact Human Resources at (630)
Thank you, trustee Schmidt. And now for trustee Sharon Fonte Sullivan.
The Glendale Lakes Golf Course is hosting their annual Mother's Day brunch on Sunday, May 14th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. The brunch will include a carving, an omelet station, various salads, breakfast and lunch entrees, children's items, and a sweets table. Complimentary champagne and mimosas will also be available. The cost is $29 for adults and $14.50 for children's ages 5 to 12. And children under 4 and under are free. Call today and make a reservation at (630) 260-0095.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan. And now for trustee Michael Light.
New yard waste curbside collections are made on your regular or holiday scheduled pickup dates by Republic Services. All yard waste must be placed in either biodegradable paper bags or in cans clearly labeled "yard waste only." Biodegradable paper bags or cans must not exceed 32 gallons in size and 50 pounds in weight. Brush must be in bundles not exceeding four feet in length, two feet in diameter, and 50 pounds in weight. Please remember that all single-family, multifamily residential units are required to utilize Republic Services for the collection and disposal of refuse. When placing your refuse and recycling toilets outside for collection, containers are to be placed at the curbside immediately adjacent to the street without interfering or endangering the movement of vehicles. Please do not overfill your garbage or recycling bins.
Thank you, trustee Light. And now for attorney Starino.
To enable an efficient and effective street sweeping schedule, parking on streets is prohibited during the months of April and May between 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. On one specific day, color-coded no parking signs have been posted in four different zones throughout the village. Parking is prohibited on Monday for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone, and Friday for the brown zone. To find out your zone, visit the village's website. For any questions on the street sweeping program, please contact Public Works at (630)
Thank you, attorney Starino. And now for trustee Marie Schmidt.
Get your 27, 28, 2018 Village Vehicle stickers starting Monday, May 8th. The new vehicle sticker must be displayed by 12:01 a.m. July 1st, 2017, on the lower right-hand corner of the windshield. Passenger vehicles start at $15. Motorcycle tags are $12. Recreational vehicle stickers are $18, and trucks with B-plates are $25. There is an additional price schedule for trucks based on their individual weights. Qualifying senior citizens will receive one sticker per household at no charge. Village ordinance restricts overnight parking on village streets to those vehicles having a valid vehicle sticker. For more information regarding Village Vehicle stickers, call (630) 260-6000.
Thank you, trustee Schmidt. And now trustee Pat Miratato.
National Public Works Week is May 21st through the 27th, and the Village of Glendale Heights Public Works Department will be celebrating with a roadshow to local schools. They will be explaining what public work staff provide to the community and equipment utilized to maintain village infrastructure. The Water Pollution Control Facility, WPCF, will also host an open house to teach about the village wastewater treatment plant for any schools that are interested. For more information, please contact the Public Works Department at (630) 260-6040.
Thank you, trustee Miratato. And now for trustee Chester Pojak.
National Police Week begins Sunday, May 14th, and runs through Saturday, May 20th. To commemorate this week, the Glendale Heights Police Department will be handing out blue ribbons for residents to put on their vehicles as a symbol of respect to those who have laid down their lives in the line of duty and to show support to law enforcement officers protecting our streets. May 15th is National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and we especially hope you'll fly the blue ribbons on that day as we honor those who have made the ultimate sacrifice while serving their communities. Blue ribbons are available at the police department. For more information, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department's non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070.
Thank you, trustee Pojak. And now for trustee Marie Schroder.
Summer is almost here, and the GH2O Aquatic Center will be opening Memorial Day weekend on May 27th. Don't forget to purchase your pool pass before May 22nd for discounted rates. Benefits for becoming a member include priority entrance at 11:30 a.m. and discounts on swim lessons, swim teen registration, pool rentals, and more. For more information, contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060.
Thank you, trustee Schroder. An article that appeared on the ChicagoBusiness.com website on Thursday, April 20th, the Village of Glendale Heights was rated number one in Chicago's hottest real estate markets. This rating was based on three major attributes: number of sales, median prices that sold, and average time of home took to sell. Over the first quarter of the year, home sales have grown by 4.8 percent. Median prices rose to 9.4 above the first quarter of the last year, and homes sold of the 69 days according to Chicago's business. All of these figures are improvements from last year. We are very proud of our ratings as the credit to our hard-working village and state staff to make Glendale Heights a great community to live in.
Okay, board, it's long enough. You guys stay seated a minute. Are you sure you guys don't want to stay?
I do.
Yeah, okay. If you put each in your name, starting District 1.
My name is Zed Khan.
Milton Aguirre.
Olandra Cruz.
Isabella Bautista.
Raba Khan.
Liam Letawa.
Jasmine Roman.
You guys and girls did a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I hope through the years, you decide to try this out for real someday. We have certificates for all of you. A little chargers because we know you don't use iPhones, right?
These are probably nicer chargers for your parents.
And would you come forward, please?
He's over there. The fresh one.
There seems to be a typo.
Thank you, ma'am. For participating. Students in government. Thank you very much. Enjoy your summer vacation.
How many more days in school?
Like about 20.
Oh, nice.
Twenty, nice.
And if you decide you want to volunteer at any time, you can always use help.
Yes.
This is always a great time of year for me, and I would like to take this opportunity to thank Mayor Jackson and Deputy Mayor Fonte Sullivan, our village clerk Marie Schmidt, and the Board of Trustees for helping me teach my student council members what it means to take an active role in local government. It is in doing that real learning takes place, and I believe this evening's experience has made a positive lasting impression on these fine young men and women. The partnership that we share would not be possible without your support. No teacher can coordinate community service learning activities and experience without the cooperation of the community itself. Working together to build a stronger community via your constant support and encouragement this year and in years past has made a lifelong impact on these students and those who have gone before them. The relationship that Glenside Middle School shares with the Village of Glendale Heights reflects Glenside's mission to work collaboratively to ensure that every student is prepared for post-secondary success. Participating in community service project is paramount in any student's preparation for real life. To my student council members, I would like you to remember this evening and those who made it possible. The Village of Glendale Heights is more than just a town. It is a family who reaches out to one another in good times and in bad. Your mayor, village clerk, Board of Trustees, and everyone who works for the Village of Glendale Heights works with one another to make this village the best that it can be. They too work collaboratively and exhibit the six pillars of good character: respect, responsibility, caring, trustworthiness. Being fair and citizenship are just not ideas that we talk about at Glenside during spirit assemblies or talk about during a special breakfast at the end of April. Together, these six pillars fuel the Village of Glendale Heights engine, and Glenside Middle School is one of many places in our village housing that fuel. That fuel comes from within you. Soon, some of you will graduate. We hope that you continue to take pride in the Village of Glendale Heights and continue to give back through community service what this wonderful village has given to you. Remember to be true to yourself. Know what your beliefs are and live them. I know I have said this to you many times during student council meetings, but it bears repeating: it's not about you. The world does not revolve around you. It's about what you can do for others. In the final analysis, the quality of a person's life is not measured by what he or she has accumulated for him or herself. It is what has been shared, given freely, with no strings attached, and no thank you expected. Each day, try to think of ways to be helpful to someone, and when you go to bed at night, be thankful that you found the opportunity to do so. Take your responsibilities seriously. Do not give anyone any reason not to trust you. Treat others with the respect with which you want others to treat you. Play fair. Lend a caring compassion and hand to those in need, and don't question why. Live the six pillars of character counts and follow the examples of your parents and community leaders. Do these things and strive to be the best that you can be.
Thank you. And again, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Good luck with everything. What grade are you?
It's so wonderful.
I'm in 7th. She's in 7th, but the rest are 8th graders.
She brings the student council every year, and it's wonderful.
Enjoy school.
We love sharing with you.
Okay, thank you.
If you guys stick around for a few minutes while we get this.
Oh, yeah, now we can have cake.
I'll just give these to my brother. I can take the white chocolate.
And Laura, we're having cake, so I hope they stay. The parents, yeah. You want to just make sure they know that. Yeah, right? We're always having cake.
I don't know if I can top that performance. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Laura. It's nice to see you, as always. It was a good speech.
And now it's our turn. First thing I'd like to do is call for a public hearing on May 18th, 2017, at 7:25 p.m. by the mayor and Board of Trustees for the purpose of receiving oral and written comments from the public concerning the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2017, and ending April 30th, 2018. So if everybody would mark their calendars to be here for the public hearing, that would be great. We have a few proclamations, the first one being a proclamation to proclaim May 4th, 2017, as National Day of Prayer. We have a proclamation to proclaim the week of May 7th through the 13th, 2017, as Municipal Clerks Week. We have a proclamation to proclaim the week of May 15th to the 21st as National Police Week, and a proclamation to proclaim the month of May as Building Safety Month. So if there are no objections, I will sign these proclamations. Thank you. And next on our list, I have two appointments to the Parks and Recreation Committee, Raymond Reynoso and Jose Lorera. I think I just totally butchered those two names, and I apologize.
I don't think to her anyway.
Okay, maybe nobody will notice.
Yeah, I don't see her.
A motion would be in order to concur with the appointments. Trustee Miratato.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Welcome Raymond and Jose. Next we go to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being known, you have the consent agenda before you. Trustee Sullivan.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan. Yes. Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Miratato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojak.
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder.
Yes. The consent agenda is approved. There is no old business, but under new business, number one is the canvas of the results from the April 4th, 2017 election for Glendale Heights. It's all yours, Marie.
I assume I don't have to read these by precinct?
No.
Thank you. Okay, this is the canvas of votes for Consolidated General Election, April 4th, 2017, for Village of Glendale Heights. Village President, Linda Jackson, 1,268 votes. Edward R. Pope, 1,057. Village of Glendale Heights Village Clerk, Marie A. Schmidt, 1,264. Kim Darlin, 1,014. Village of Glendale Heights Village Trustee, District 2, Sharon Fonte Sullivan, 327 votes. Village of Glendale Heights Village Trustee, District 5, Chester Pojak, 191 votes. Village of Glendale Heights Village Trustee, District 6, Mary Schroder, 405 votes.
Thank you, Marie. And that is official from the DuPage County Election Commission. Next thing we have to do is the swearing-in of our elected officials by our judge slash attorney, Don Starino.
That's wonderful.
I don't care. Whatever you say.
Let's do it down.
Let's do it down there.
Good evening. It's a really special occasion. I just want to say a couple things. There's really just two emotions that I feel, and that's honor and gratitude. The honor is that I get to serve these really terrific elected officials. They have put in so much time and so much effort to this community over the years, and I've had the opportunity to watch that, and it's been really a blessing. The residents and citizens of Glendale Heights under the leadership of Mayor Linda Jackson and Marie Schmidt and all the trustees and the board has been just exemplary. They do a terrific job. They work really hard, and I think the thing that strikes me the most is that, you know, we solve problems, we plow streets, we solve public works issues, but we really touch the people is what I think. We do park parties. We do, you know, intercultural events. We do things that touch every resident and citizen of Glendale Heights, and I think that's why the people of Glendale Heights have chosen to reelect these terrific people. And the gratitude is very personal for me. This is the 37th year for me in Glendale Heights. Lots have changed since I came, 37 years ago. I didn't have gray hair, but the thing for me has been that it's been pretty much a love affair for that many years. We were a very young fledgling firm, and Glendale Heights gave us a chance, and we'll be forever in their gratitude and debt for that. So thanks to all of you. With that, I get to swear in my mayor, Linda Jackson. I get to do this because I serve on a thing called the Illinois Court of Claims. It's a state court that permits me to serve as a judge, but it also lets me, permits me to do the things that I do in my private life or in my public life as an attorney. So Mayor Jackson, if you're ready, I'm ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, please repeat after me. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
I.
Linda Jackson.
Linda Jackson.
Having been elected to the office of village president.
Having been elected to the office of village president.
In the Village of Glendale Heights.
In the Village of Glendale Heights.
In the county of DuPage.
In the county of DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge?
The duties?
The duties?
Of the office of village president?
Of the office of village president?
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Mayor. Oh, sure. We don't have to pass. Marie Schmidt? Village clerk. So please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Marie A. Schmidt?
Aye, Marie A. Schmidt.
Having been elected to the office of village clerk?
Having been elected to the office of village clerk?
In the village of Glendale Heights?
In the village of Glendale Heights.
In the county of DuPage?
In the county of DuPage.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge?
The duties of the office of village clerk?
The duties of the office of village clerk?
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
Sharon Fonte Sullivan? Oh, I'm right. Good. Sharon, please repeat after me. Aye, Sharon Sullivan?
Aye, Sharon Sullivan.
Having been elected to the office of village trustee?
Having been elected to the office of village trustee?
In District 2?
In District 2.
In the village of Glendale Heights?
In the village of Glendale Heights.
In the county of DuPage?
In the county of DuPage.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge?
The duties of village clerk, District 2?
The duties of village clerk, District 2?
To the best of my ability?
Village trustee.
Village trustee? You're not going to be the clerk. The village trustee.
Village trustee.
District 2?
Does it say that in there?
It says District 2. To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Chester? You don't want to be village clerk, do you?
No, not today.
Okay, good. So please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Chester Pojak?
Aye, Chester Pojak.
Having been elected to the office of village trustee, District 5?
Having been elected to the office of village trustee, District 5?
In the village of Glendale Heights?
In the village of Glendale Heights.
In the county of DuPage?
In the county of DuPage.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge?
The duties of village trustee?
The duties of village trustee?
For District 5?
For District 5.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Marie. Mary, other Mary. We saved the best for last.
Oh, thank you.
So please raise your right hand and repeat after me, Mary. I'm Mary Schroder.
I'm Mary Schroder.
Having been elected to the office of village trustee?
Having been elected to the office of village trustee?
District 6?
District 6.
In the village of Glendale Heights?
In the village of Glendale Heights.
In the county of DuPage?
In the county of DuPage.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge?
The duties of the office of village trustee?
The office of village trustee?
District 6?
District 6.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, thanks. This is really a fine group. Terrific group. Glendale Heights is very fortunate.
Thank you.
Now I'm going to wait till I get up there. You're not done. Before I go ahead to the next thing on our agenda, I would just like to, on behalf of the entire board, thank all the residents that went out and supported us, that believed in us, that trusted us, and are giving us the chance to continue to move forward in the village. We really appreciate it. Thank you for trusting us. Thank you for believing us...in us, and we promise we will not let you down. Anytime you have any questions, please come in, see us, talk to us, or we have coffee with the mayor and board every Saturday from...every first Saturday of the month at the senior center from 10 until noon. So please, if you ever have questions, we'd be happy to tell you the truth. And thank you, everyone. And now, I have a few appointments to make. One of the reasons we're able to accomplish what we do is because we have phenomenal staff, and they all operate under the direction of our executive staff. They've done a great job by us, so I would like to go down the list, and these are all reappointments. Village Administrator Raquel Becerra. Assistant Village Administrator Roger Mabit, who's promised he's going to stay another four years. Finance Director Bill Polling. Director of Parks, Recreation, and Facilities Keith Knouts. Director of Public Services Rachel Kaplan. Director of Community Development Joanne Couchbrenner. And Chief of Police Doug Flint. I'd also like to reappoint our Village of Glendale Heights attorneys, the law firm of Strino, Romello, and Durkin. And our village engineers, Christopher B. Burke, Engineering LTD. So a motion would be in order. Trustee Pojak?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Second.
Third.
Third.
Fourth.
Fourth.
You know what? We're going to do a roll call vote.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Welcome back, all of you, even though you didn't leave. And thank you for the tremendous job you do all year. We're now back to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being none, um, before we break for cake to celebrate, um, we're going to adjourn this meeting, go into committee of the whole that has one item.
Right.
And then everybody can join us. For, of course, cake. A motion would be in order to adjourn this meeting. Trustee Sullivan?
A motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Fonte, is that yours?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay.
I call this meeting of the committee of the whole of May 4 to order for the clerk. Please note who's present.
Noted.
Any additions? Okay. Committee recommendations, planned commission? Oh, okay, sorry. Public...any public comment? On an agenda item? Or anything, or anything. Okay, sorry. Are you being none?
Do we have any...do we have any add-ons?
I just say I have.
Yes.
Did you?
You want anything?
And you know better than to do anything tonight, right?
Not tonight.
All right, thank you.
Next time.
Okay, recommendation 555 High Grove Boulevard. A recommendation to approve an amendment to the High Grove Center, DuPage, East Campus, Planned Unit Development, to allow truck docks that are not enclosed facing Glen Allen Road. Chester? Trustee Pojak?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Are we moving this to the board?
Wait.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm...
I got to fix your motion. Motion to move it to the board with the recommendation to concur.
Oh, thank you. I didn't even think of that.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That's it, guys. We need an adjournment. Mayor Jackson?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Good night, everybody. Thank you. We're getting off.